Okay, I'll call this village board meeting for May 21st, 2018 to order, please. Roll call.
Joe Zitzelberger.
Here.
Sam Boweg.
Here.
Sue Springman.
Here.
Phil Random.
Chris Selner.
Here.
Phil Williams.
Here.
Erin Moran.
Here.
Okay, first thing we got is confirmation of open meeting compliance, Lori.
I have the confirmation of the public postings, official notices, and online availability for the open meeting.
Okay. Next, we've got our consent agenda. Is there anybody that would like anything pulled, or I look for a motion?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Phil, second by Sue. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Public comment, is there anyone here that would like to address the board on an issue that's not on the agenda for this evening? Lori, is there any?
Yes, I have several public comments here. So, one minute. Brian Sipple.
Oh, this is good speed. What, I fell off, I'm sorry.
Just a public comment that was...
About the meeting?
For all businesses. He checked two.
I wanted to speak on the whole business problem we checked on the box.
On the agenda, okay. Okay, next.
Arabia.
Yeah.
Mine should be actually pretty quick. I just had a procedural question. The fact that what I wanted to ask about is not on the agenda, I figure it fits. What's the proper way to submit a petition to the village? I want to make sure that it doesn't get voided just because of some technicalities. That's all I wanted to know. Just the right way to submit it.
So during public comment, we can't respond to you?
No.
But I can direct staff to make sure that you have that response.
Okay.
Okay?
I just came in earlier and asked Lori, but she didn't know, so.
I gave him Julie's information.
Yep, Lori's filling in unfortunately tonight for Julie, so, sorry about that, but we'll get that to you as soon as we possibly can. Okay?
That's it.
Okay?
Mary Heinbecker.
I want to just to thank you. I just wanted to thank staff and the village board for getting and moving forward to have the meetings on YouTube and to get archives on them. So, thank you guys very much for moving forward with that.
Thank you.
Mary Ellen Kearney.
I was at the groundbreaking for the library today, and my heart was just swelling with pride to think that I could live in a community like Wanakee where people were able to work together finally to get things done from the library staff, the friends of the library, the village staff, the village board, and also Gary Hurstberg was there, and I worked with him on an initial committee, and I know how he took that and ran with it all these years, and I'm just so thankful. That's going to be another crown in Wanakee's honor.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment about the fact that in 1644, there was a book written called Lex Rex, which says that law is king. And it was written to repeat the idea that the king could just do whatever he wanted to do. And some people seem to think that T. Wall is king, and that he's going to do whatever he wants to do without any due process. And I keep reading letters in the newspaper, and people talk to me on the street, and I just want to assure them that we have laws in this country, there's procedure, and nothing's going to happen until the procedure is followed and things are done correctly. And I appreciate the village board and our constitution and everything remaining intact, that it's not out of control, and even though somebody tells you that they're going to do something without due procedure, it's not going to happen.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'm not responding to your comment, but I would say, I thought you were going to talk about the royal wedding at first. All good, all good, all good, all good. It's been on TV enough.
Okay, that is all I have, unless somebody has another sheet.
Anyone else? Okay. I would echo Mary Ellen's statement earlier in regards to, for my public comment here, the library, groundbreaking was very special, and our former board president, John Lovemeyer, would have been very proud. I think he was taking care of us at that meeting, or at that presentation, I'll put it, because it stopped raining exactly when it was starting and started raining exactly when it finished. So, it gave us that opportunity to get in without completely getting soaked during it, and giving the people that were there, and we had a very nice crowd of people in attendance, so. Todd, did you have any public comments tonight?
No, it's great.
Okay. All right, first on the agenda is presentations. First is discuss and take action on proclamation honoring the Crookton family. So I'd look first for a motion on this.
I make a motion, we approve the proclamation honoring the Crookton family.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Sam. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. And we have a member of the Crookton family here. Come on up. Do you want to introduce yourself to everybody?
Hello, I'm Jane George, and I would like to say thank you on behalf of my parents, Ed and Betty Crookton, and my family, and to say thank you to the community. It's been an honor and a privilege to have served the community for 44 years, so thank you very much.
So, we have proclamation honoring the Crookton family. Whereas the Village of Wanakee businesses play a central role in strengthening our community and our economy by providing necessary services, embracing technology, and employing a capable workforce. And whereas the Village of Wanakee, including village staff, volunteers, and residents are collectively proud to support a business climate that encourages quality care, job growth, and community involvement. And whereas the family of Wanakee is pleased to recognize the accomplishments of the Ed and Betty Crookton family and the Wanakee Manor Healthcare Center, who have called Wanakee area home for more than 50 years, and in doing so, and in so doing, contributed greatly to the quality of life in the village. And whereas the Village of Wanakee seeks to demonstrate our commitment to and partnership with Ed and Betty Crookton family and the Wanakee Manor Healthcare Center, who provided necessary and comprehensive care for so many seniors in our community throughout the years, and to express our appreciation to them for this vital contribution. And whereas the Village of Wanakee recognizes the many charitable, civic, and philanthropic contributions made by Ed and Betty family, Ed and Betty Crookton family, and the Wanakee Manor Healthcare Center to our community. And whereas it is fitting to offer the residents of the Village of Wanakee an opportunity to recognize, celebrate, and support Ed and Betty Crookton family and the Wanakee Manor Healthcare Center for the essential role they have played in caring for the residents of Wanakee and those from our neighboring communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the village board and the Village of Wanakee extends its sincere and heartfelt appreciation to Ed and Betty Crookton family and the Wanakee Manor Healthcare Center for their untiring commitment to the Village of Wanakee, and calls upon all to help express our collective appreciation for the profound contributions of our village partner, Ed and Betty Crookton family and the Wanakee Manor Healthcare Center. Let this resolution be entered into and made part of the permanent records of the Village of Wanakee, and let a suitable copy be presented to Ed and Betty Crookton family and the Wanakee Manor Healthcare Center. Passed and adopted this 21st day of May, 2018.
Now I'll shed a little light for everybody. Their quality of care went up drastically after I stopped working there. One of my places of employment, so, appreciate it again, thank you.
Don't let him kid you, he's a very good employee. Also, village president.
Thank you. So I can tell Lori's in charge, because she actually puts sign here things where I wouldn't know where I was supposed to sign with my name. And that's, that's pretty good. Phew, I'm going to take that one out. All right, I'll just drink a water if that's okay, because we have two tonight. Okay, next on the agenda is discuss and take action on proclamation honoring Randy Mefford. So I'd look for a motion on that.
Motion to approve the proclamation honoring Randy Mefford.
Motion by Erin, second, was it Joe?
Yep.
Second by Joe. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. I saw Randy, he was in here. Come on up. We never make mistakes at the village, but we did, we did have Randy here last meeting when we didn't have his proclamation ready, so, my apologies for that again. So, proclamation recognizing the retirement of firefighter Randy Mefford and honoring him for 30 years of outstanding service to the Village of Wanakee. Whereas the Village of Wanakee values its volunteers and appreciates their service to the community, and whereas the residents of the Village of Wanakee have long enjoyed the benefits of a volunteer fire department for more than 100 years. And whereas Randy Mefford began his career in fire service with the Wanakee Fire Department on March 14th, 1988, and retired on March 31st, 2018 after serving 30 years. And whereas Randy Mefford served the department as secretary from January 2000 until January 2018, managing the fire district's finances. And whereas Randy Mefford served on numerous committees, played a major role in the fire station remodel in 2011, and was a key member in apparatus design and purchase. And whereas Randy Mefford, along with his brothers Todd and Troy, and their father Joe, have served on the department as well as employing several current and past firefighters, allowing them the ability to leave their jobs to assist the community during an emergency. And whereas Randy Mefford provided mentorship and guidance to fellow members of the department. And whereas Randy Mefford's sincere attitude and dedication have served as an excellent example to those he has worked with over the years. And whereas the residents of the Village of Wanakee benefited greatly from Randy Mefford's devotion to public safety and his many hours of volunteer service. Now therefore be it resolved that the village board of the Village of Wanakee extend its sincere and heartfelt appreciation of Randy Mefford, present tire and commitment to the Wanakee Fire Department and the residents of the Wanakee Fire District. Let this resolution be entered into and made part of the permanent records of the Village of Wanakee, and let a suitable copy be presented to Randy Mefford. Passed and adopted this 21st day of May, 2018. Congratulations. For all of us here in the audience, and for those, if Roberta puts something in the paper, our volunteers, both our EMS and fire, are so critical to our community and what they all do for us and the sacrifices they make. And for anybody who's interested and would like to be part of that group, which is a great group, please contact Dave Cupp, or Brian Adler, or any of your local firemen that you see on the street. They'll be happy to help you. Thanks again, Erin.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. Phil just said if you start a chimney fire, they will also come. I'm not recommending that, however. Nor would we ever want to do that. So, anyway, thanks for all of your service, Randy. Okay, next item we have is public hearing. Discuss and take action on request to rezone 6172 County Highway I, Town of Westport, to Village ER-1. So, we'll have it introduced, and then we'll have the public hearing, and then we'll comment. Kevin?
So, the request is to rezone the property at 6172 County Trunk I from Ag to ER-1, which will allow by a conditional use a shed, which the joint planning commission thought would be reasonable size in terms of that property. So, our planning commission didn't have any objections, and the joint planning commission recommended approval.
Okay, I'll open up the public hearing then. Is everybody okay with that being two minutes if we're not having any comments? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. Board members' comments or look for a motion?
I move approval, request to rezone.
Second.
Motion by Sue Springman, second by Phil Williams. Any other comments? Call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Next on our new business, we have discuss and take action on Wanakee Area Fire District air packs funding requests.
I'll introduce it, but we do have some people from the fire department here that, if there are questions. So, back when we adopted the 2018 budget, we had an estimate from the fire district for some air packs and various fire equipment that goes with that, and the village's share was estimated at $150,750, and that's what we put into our budget. And then recently, we became aware that they did not receive a grant that they had applied for, and so now our share is increasing to, or increasing by $14,390. So, we're just here to approve, you know, adding that into the budget.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Sue, you're on, are you on fire?
Well, I was at the last meeting, but I knew about this before.
Phil, do you have any comments, Phil?
None, other than the fact that the, all the other townships that share in this bill have approved it also. And we need it, otherwise the guys can't breathe when they're fighting fires. Very crucial.
Okay.
More of a procedural question. Do we adjust the budget, or are we just basically saying yes?
So, at this point, we're just approving further use of the fund balance. Our budget at, at the very end of the year, after the year is done, we formally approve all budget amendments, so this would be included in that as well.
Okay. Anybody else?
But, oh, sorry, but the fire district needs an answer from us if we were going to borrow money or use a borrowing that they could do. So, my recommendation is that we use the unassigned fund balance as we were going to for the $150,000 that we had in the budget, and we don't do any type of borrowing.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve an additional $14,390 of unassigned fund balance to be used to pay for the village's share of the fire district equipment.
Okay, motion by Phil.
Second.
Second by Erin. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Next, we've got discuss and take action on...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next we've got discuss and take action on resolution awarding the sale of $7,450,000 general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2018A. I'm assuming Mike is going to... You're on, Mr. Harrigan?
My name is Mike Harrigan, I'm with the Dallas and Associates Firm. We serve as financial advisors for the Village of Wanakee. And on behalf of the village today, we put bids from banks and underwriting firms around the country for the right to purchase the bonds that were being offered by the village for purposes of library construction improvements and some other budget projects of the village. And I'm pleased to report to you that we received four bids today, with the best bid coming from the Tiger Jaffrey Firm out of Minneapolis. I've summarized the bid results in the sale day report document that we delivered to you this evening, and I won't go through this page by page, but the bid tabulation starts on page three and goes to page four and five. You can see that the key number for purposes of the award is the true interest rate. That rate is an average of 3.195, 3.1959%. For purposes of comparing this to our planning runs, we were utilizing an estimate of 3.4% for that average, and so, and that effectiveness is positive because of the fact, not only did we get lower interest rate, but the underwriter took a smaller discount fee in the process. And so, the result here is that there will be approximately additional $89,000 available to the village for project costs. And this works well into your plan, because as part of the comprehensive plan for financing of the library, the actual final financing of that library was scheduled for later, early next year. This was a state trust fund loan, and that was an amount of about $2 million. But this amount can be available and then to downsize and reduce the cost of that at these low interest rates that we received today. I might remind you that the reason for the trailing financing in 2019 was twofold. One was to maintain your bank qualification on this issue, you've got your lower interest rate this year, but also because you're fundraising, and you will know more precisely the amount of dollars you will collect when the raising of those funds, you will tailor that final financing to not only necessary to fund the unfunded portion at that point in time. And so, if you take a look at page seven, the breakout here is indicated for the maturities that will be necessary to pay back the debt for both the library project and we have the cost associated with tax increment districts number eight related to the Humpy project, including here for about $75,000. And the totals are indicated on the far right. From an interest rate perspective, you'll see that we ended up with a total interest cost of about $81,000 less than our original estimate of principal interest cost on the issue. That's further reflected in the results on page eight. And your results are a little lower tax rate according to the prevalence of each year going forward. I want to again congratulate the village on its credit rating, as you do whenever you do a borrowing of this kind. You sought to have your credit rating reaffirmed by Moody's Investor Service, and you did get your credit rating reaffirmed at the AA2 rating level. And top rating is AAA, and then you're AA1 and AA2, so you're just two notches below the best there is in terms of that rating scale. You know, a full copy of the credit report in this document, starting on page nine, you can see what Moody's had to say about you against this thing. But again, very positive outlook, and a good result here was achieved. And I want to also mention that the staff has to really be credited here, because there's about an hour and a half process that they go through, and interview with the Moody's rating analysts, whom which they are expected to be able to respond to and answer all these financial questions that they're going to add. And both Todd and I did that, and did bring the job for you on that, so congratulations on the result. The, the action today, if the board is comfortable with this, this result in the bid, would be to take action to approve the resolution that was prepared in final form today by your monitoring. That would be one of the templates. And that resolution is before you, awards the sale of the bond are a little better. It locks in on the interest rates that are identified, that identifies that you're borrowing these bonds for public purposes, and you're going to follow the IRS rules, attend all of that, and you will be providing ongoing disclosure of your financials as long as the bonds are outstanding. And most importantly, that you're levying the tax necessary to make the payments of principal interest on the debt. So, with that, Mr. President, I'm happy to answer your question.
Board members, any questions for Mike?
Just one, our rating that we received from Moody's, with a village our size, a community our size, is it plausible to even get into the higher ratings that you're looking at there?
It's not impossible, and the, the interesting thing here, they give you a little guidance on this in the, in the summary report. I will just quote a couple of things here for you on that. And it talks about what factors can lead to a credit rating upgrade, and you could, as you proceed through prosecution of your tax increment districts and entire your tax increment districts, that's going to be a positive thing on that rating process. And then, the management of your debt going forward, management of your debt burden, you've always tried to maintain a management and control of your debt within parameters, and continuing to do that. And as you go through time, you, you've taken on a couple of legacy projects, this would be one of, the library project. And so, your actual debt burden will be projected to go down, as that goes down, and that's another important factor in the rating consideration process. So, we think that the chances of being able to be considered for the next one, or AA2, AA1 are pretty positive over the next five, six years. AAA, so it'll be a little harder, all because your tax, your tax base is probably going to have to quadruple to get to that one. It's not possible to get there, but probably in the next five years.
As long as you're going down that road, what type of interest rate savings would we see if we went to AA1?
You probably would be looking at about a 10 to 15 basis points, which is, a 10 basis points is 1/10 to 1%.
Any other comments or questions? Otherwise, I'd look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution awarding the sale of $7.45 million general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2018A.
Second.
Motion by Sam, second by Sue. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, next we've got discuss and take action on octopi development agreement and municipal revenue obligations. Are we going into closed session right now?
No, Isaac's here to provide you with a presentation about what octopi is up to, and then I can provide a, Brian and I can provide some brief comments about developers' agreement, potential content, and then closed session after that.
Are you asking if you want to move old business?
Yeah.
Oh.
Does it make sense to move old business first?
Yes.
Asking you guys that, so.
Yes.
Yes? Okay. So, I'm going to reorder the agenda then to move our old business before our potential closed session items. Sorry, Isaac?
Okay.
Extra exercise.
Page 127. What, Kevin?
All right, so we've got discuss and take action on petition for annexation by Lone Silo North Addition LLC, annexation ordinance, rezone, and pre-annexation agreement. Who's introducing?
I'm going to introduce it to Chris, and then Brian's going to follow that up with some additional comments. And I suspect that we have some people here that want to speak tonight, so you guys have to make the decision on that part. But just as an introduction, Todd's going to bring up the map. We have a request to annex the property, and it's really bordered by Woodland Drive and County Trunk Q, and intersects with the Peaceville Valley Parkway. It's consistent with our comprehensive plan. It's been approved by the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission, and it's been recommended approval by the Village Planning Commission, as well as this joint planning commission. The pre-annexation agreement was included in the packet, a couple highlights. This has temporary zoning, you're not setting the zoning at this point, you're setting it at Ag Holding. This requires a phased development, no more than 60 lots every two years. And importantly, it defers on the multifamily until the village has time to complete its housing study. The sewer is a phased approach. For phase one, they'll be extending the sewer necessary across County Trunk Q. The phase two development, which is the west side of the development, will be deferred until other areas around it is developed, because the sewer will have to come up from Water Wheel. There's a required looping connection for the water system, so by the time he reaches, or they reach 50 equivalent lots, they'll be required to have two water connections to Woodland Drive. We've identified sewer improvements that are necessary downstream, partially one pipe size, or a pipe potentially could be too small. And then there's some lift station improvements. They have agreed to pay their proportionate share, we just haven't determined what that is until we do a completed couple of studies. They've also agreed to make bike and pedestrian improvements on the south side of Woodland Drive. We already have a bike path on the north side of Woodland Drive. We thought it was important to include a bike, an off-road bike and pedestrians on the south side, so we didn't have, because of the school connection to the other high school, that we don't have unnecessary crossings of Woodland Drive. And some of the board members will remember that we had to pay $48,000 in terms of land acquisition for stormwater improvements that were necessary for Highway Q.
Q. We've asked them to pay us back for those expenses that we had to deal with. So with that, I don't, Brian may have a couple more summary comments.
Just, all I would add to that is at the last village board meeting, we had provided a draft to the village board. And I think Kevin pretty much hit on the, what would be the changes from the version that was shared with you on the seventh to the version that was in your packet for this. And it was primarily the utility-related issues. And we just needed to sit down with the developer and work through some of those issues. And then as we, as we worked through this process, we also added the language that Kevin referenced regarding the multifamily. And so, and the other thing I would add would be just, you know, this is the form of the agreement and a lot of what I would call the legalese or other requirements that Kevin didn't touch on are in the form of the other pre-annexations agreements that we've executed in the past, including Kill Kenny Farms. Tonight, what's before you is the, the annexation agreements and also the annexation ordinance. Part of the annexation ordinance is the zoning that Kevin touched on, but again, it's effectively immaterial change. We're just going from egg to egg. The other zoning changes will come in the future as the land's developed. I did have a communication with Julie today, and so if you look at page two of the annexation ordinance, there is a blank for the ward designation and it would, if this land comes in, it's going to go into Ward twelve, she said.
So we had a public hearing last meeting on this.
Correct.
And we have some people that want to speak on this, is that correct? How many approximately?
Three written and three want to speak.
Okay, so for, for, I'm going to allow those who have comments to make to do that with the people that are in writing right now. Did anybody else have one that they turned in or didn't get turned in? Okay. And they're not going to be any back and forth amongst the crowd, that's the important thing. If that happens, we'll shut it down right away. If anybody's going to get negative at anybody else who's on the opposite side of the fence. But we'll, I'll allow the comments to be made. So Julie, or Julie, Lori, will you please read the ones that are written, the comments?
The written?
Yep.
Jenny Aker, three-three-one East Main Street. I would like the board to know I support the Lone Silo North Addition project. I work with a lot of developers and there are few that I can say this about. Don Tierney truly cares about his subdivisions, its residents, and the community. A handshake with Don is the same as a written contract. Because of Don, Wanakee has beautiful parks, homes, and a vast price range. We have built homes in Don's subdivisions for three hundred thousand to a million. Please allow this project to move forward. Not only will it provide much-needed lots, we have far fewer buildable lots in Wanakee than we have had several years ago, but it will also provide jobs for many people in our community. Thank you, Jenny Aker Emberson. Danielle Bodhun, Bodhun, sorry, I'm sure I butchered that, supports annexation.
Lori, I'm sorry, address?
There's none.
None. Maybe we could get this spelling and address.
The spelling is, on there, pronunciation is Bowdoin, and I'm a resident of Sunbury. Yes.
Thank you.
Sam Kaufman, nine oh eight Tierney Drive.
Turnberry.
Sorry, you're correct, Turnberry, sorry. I would not support the annexation unless fifty percent or greater of the site is used for multifamily units or apartments. Wanakee has a major need for apartments and this is a better place to put them than downtown. There's also a capital view from the site, so higher rents could be charged. Roads capable of increased traffic are around the site. This parcel's development would be beneficial to the village if used for the right purpose.
Okay.
Those are the written ones.
Okay, and then the, read off who's, would like to speak?
Okay, Brian Sipple, four oh one North Sundry Avenue.
I'd just like to speak on behalf of the development. I'm a builder in town, excuse me. I just, just made a few just notes. I mean, one thing about Tierney subdivisions, you know, he puts the parks in right away. He doesn't, he puts the pools in. The community gets the tax base. I worked for a lot of developers over the times when, when the economy lagged a little and, and they dropped all of their architectural control standards to help sell lots and reduce things. I gotta tell you, Wanakee is really lucky to have the Tierneys, they didn't do that. You know, and it protected all of the other people that had bought and built in the community already. So it's a huge, huge thing, so somebody stood strong during the downturn, okay? That speaks volumes. So I just wanted to bring that up. I heard comment here about basis points if, if the credit rating went up would help that with tax base. I think this is a good start. This, this would help the tax base. I just want to tell you, I think that Wanakee has prospered really well and I think everybody's lucky to have Tierney in Wanakee. I thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Ann Becker, eighteen Cherokee Circle, Madison.
Good evening. Always want to say that. When I do that in morning church, when I'm speaking, everyone always says back, "Good evening." Anyway, I'm representing Wanakee Community Bank at thirteen fifty-one Water Wheel Drive and just wanted to let the village board know that we're seeing a lot of people that are coming to the bank that are looking to move to Wanakee and, and they're coming back with some comments that it's hard to find properties in Wanakee. So just wanted to get, kind of give you that perspective, that, that we're hearing that, that people are looking to Wanakee for many of, all the reasons that like the Wanakee, or the, the library that we went to the grand groundbreaking today, or the school system and things like that. So just wanted to let the village board know that we're hearing that.
Thank you.
Jerry Tierney, three-five-six-four Ed Green Road.
I don't want to say too much, but I, I just want to let everybody know that we've been working a long time and we work hard to try to do a good job and give a good quality product and treat people fair. And if we can move ahead with this, we're going to keep going in the same fashion we've been going since I was ten years old. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so.
You could, you can, you have really before you two items, the pre-annexation agreement and the annexation ordinance. If you want, you can have two separate votes or you can have one vote. It's really up to you if, if you think that your votes may be different on the two items, which I think would be a little unlikely, you can have two separate votes. If you think everyone's vote is going to be the same, no matter which item, then you can have the same, same motion.
Is there a motion? I'm trying to find the.
If, if you're inclined to approve, it would be, I would say, motion to approve annexation ordinance and pre-annexation agreement.
Can I?
Brian, can you, can you just repeat that for everybody? I don't, I don't know where everybody's going to vote, so I think it's probably best if we should have two.
Okay, I would, I would vote on the annexation ordinance first then. And, and again, as I mentioned before, the rezone, which is, you know, administrative in nature, is, is a part of the annexation ordinance.
Can you read what that, what that motion should state for, whoever would like to make that motion if they are.
Motion approving ordinance providing for the direct annexation of a portion of the town of Westport to the village of Wanakee.
Okay, do we have that motion from anyone here?
I would move annexation.
So motion by Susan Springman, do we have a second?
Yes.
Second by Phil Williams. Any other comments in regards to this?
Yes. Can we talk to the timeline quick, just like, are the next steps after this?
Well, so there would have to be, for development to occur, there's going to have to be a land division and, and that's, so that could be potentially an initial certified survey map that just divides some land, but not, not all of it, or a preliminary and final plan. That's one thing that would have to occur before there would be development. The property is also going to have to be rezoned. So all we're doing right now by bringing it in from a zoning standpoint is taking it from town agricultural zoning to village agricultural zoning. I think there's, if, if, if the property is developed similar to Kill Kenny Farms, which is across the street, then we're going to have, it's going to be planned unit development district, which means we're going to have a, a general development plan that would be proposed for the property that would kind of split it up, similar to how, how the map is identified, where there's going to be, I think, some commercial, some mixed use, then some single-family residential. I, I would note too that the, the vote right now is on the annexation ordinance, but also when you get to the pre-annexation agreement, to be clear, it's, there's language in the pre-annexation agreement that says that the development's going to have to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, just to the extent, and, and I think that, I don't think that that is the map, is that the map from the comp plan?
No.
No.
But the, just in, in village staff reviewing this, the conceptual plan that has been provided by the developer is consistent with the comp plan map that we also have for the area.
Brian, I would just add that actually, Todd, if you can go there, it actually was included, the outline, the next, the next page, one hundred of one sixty, is that number four of the pre-annexation agreement actually goes through the things that just Brian just outlined.
And the right one?
That's the comprehensive plan, but that's fine. It's, it's just, it's, number four in the development agreement says preliminary plat, then before development occurs, we have to have a development agreement, and then we have to have planned submittals. And then it went on to go to the phased development. So all those steps were included in the pre-annexation agreement. It's actually probably backwards, we probably should be approving the pre-annexation agreement first. Well, they both, they both work together.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments?
Are there other side effects that come into play by approving this? Is there any other property that's affected or anything of that nature?
Well, so I guess the, the annexation itself, the only land that's being annexed is land owned by the developer. So to that extent, it's, it's only developer-owned land that's impacted. We do, the village does have two agreements that are in place right now that dictate that if, if this land gets annexed, then the, the Mueller or Miller property that is immediately adjacent to it and the school district property along Woodland Drive, both of those properties are going to be coming into the district, or I'm sorry, be coming into the village by annexation. So they are impacted from the standpoint of if you annex this land, they're going to come in, but this annexation in of itself only deals with land owned by the developer.
But they were, were those two property owners aware of this?
As part of the agreements we had with the Miller property, when any development occurred around them, it was automatic that they were going to become annexed into the village at that point.
And the school district.
And the school district was aware, yeah, they were part of the discussions.
To be clear, it doesn't, it doesn't immediate, the annexation isn't immediate, the same process of annexation will then be initiated.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Then the next motion, if you want to read it, Brian?
Motion to approve pre-annexation agreement between Lone Silo North Addition LLC, Down Nation Farms LLC and the village of Wanakee. And just so you guys, the two LLCs are the property owners.
Aye.
Still moved.
Susan Springman?
I'll also second.
Second by Phil Williams. Any other comments on this one? Here now, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. So then we're going to go back to new business, discuss and take action on occupied development agreement and municipal revenue obligation. Isaac.
Thanks for having us.
Don't take offense that they're leaving, some people just get up.
Pretty well crowded, first time I see it. So my name is Isaac, I'm the owner of Occupied Brewing. We are here to talk about our expansion plans, so I don't know, we can go to the next one. So we came here about four years ago with an idea and a plan. We bought a lot that was farmland and very quickly we have grown to become the fifth largest brewery in the, in the entire state in terms of production. What we do is we do contract brewing, we brew beer for other people. Primarily, the ones we can talk about, we do all the beer for One Barrel Brewing Company, Thor County Brewing, among others. We have about seventeen clients right now that we produce beer. In the first three years, like I said, we're still pretty young, we've been recognized by a few people. We won Wisconsin Manufacturer of the Year, we've been nominated twice. We won the Rising Star Award for Minority Business Owner. We won the SB Dan County Award and Best Places to Work in Dan County. We just did an expansion, two million dollars, mostly for equipment. We added a canning line and capacity. And we started with six employees our first year, second year we went to seventeen, this year we're twenty-five and as of this month, we're twenty-eight full-time employees. So we've grown pretty, pretty fast. We send beer to forty-five states in the U.S., so there's about eight million cans and bottles that have Wanakee, Wisconsin inside, that go to forty-five states and ten different countries in Europe, which is pretty cool. We need to expand to keep up with capacity, with our demand. We have a lot of clients that are growing, we're very excited, but we need to add about a thirty thousand square foot building to our current building right now to keep up with hopefully the next three years of demand. We are looking to invest about six million dollars, probably it's going to be six and a half by the time we're done. And we are committed to adding another thirty employees, thirty jobs, full-time jobs in our place. And in order to continue growing, we can never do things by ourselves, we need the support of everybody and the village to kind of give us their blessing to, to do this big expansion plan. So what did we do this year and last year? So everything in beer is measured in barrels, one barrel's thirty-one U.S. gallons, it's about thirteen cases, fourteen cases in twelve bottles. Last year we did about twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand barrels. That puts us at the same size of El Silo, if you guys know it, they're pretty close by. And this year we're going to do about thirty-two thousand barrels. So just above us are Minhas in Monroe, Nuclearis, Stevens Point, Lakefront, and then we're there. Hopefully with this expansion, we'll be as close or bigger than Lakefront next year, which will put us in number five or four. Once we hit thirty thousand barrels, we need to start a new building and kind of like our expansion plans is an additional thirty thousand square foot building. We want to be number four hopefully next year or the year after, and we want to start producing more than beer. So we're done already ciders, sodas, sorry, sodas and flavored malt beverages, kind of like your hard lemonade. And our goal is to grow production to fifty thousand barrels by the end of twenty twenty, which will put us in number four in the list in the entire state. And it is a little bit of capacity, how much we're going to invest and how we're going to grow, but hopefully in, in the next few years, the first is putting a big building and then we just add teams and of course people to, to keep growing. And then some pictures of our current space, when we opened, it was pretty empty. And in two and a half years, we barely have any space to move inside. Adding the canning line, we thought it was going to be about thirty, forty percent of our growth, but it's about a hundred percent of our growth. Everybody's doing cans now and cans take a lot of space, so we do need, we're desperate need of the extra space. We currently have a warehouse about a mile from our current facility that we just rented out space to warehouse stuff, but we would love to bring it all in-house, it makes things much easier. And these are just very preliminary stuff, but this, it would look more or less, what with the new building included? So we would double our office space, we would double our taproom space, we would actually put a kitchen, so our food truck hopefully will move inside, an actual commercial kitchen. We're going to have a bigger lab, a faster canning line, we'll probably have like the second fastest canning line apart from Nuclearis, and new shared spaces for employees, so that's all coming with a new expansion plan. Just a few other views. That's it. That's it.
Thank you. I would, I would just echo, and we're going to go into closed session about some things, but I would just echo that Sue and I had an opportunity to go out and tour the facility, and you literally have to wedge your way through. It's, it's very crowded inside, and I'm glad you're having the success that you're having.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and it was pretty cool. How many, how many, how many cans are out in the country right now that have Wanakee on?
This year, we're going to have about 8 million cans or bottles going to 45 states with the word Wanakee, Wisconsin on the side. That's just this year. Hopefully next year, it'll be way more than that.
Any questions, other, other board members? Isaac?
Yes, Moiseus, so it was very impressive to see the facility, because I, I'm sorry, but I'd never been out there and I don't drink beer. But it was amazing what you've done out in that, in that building.
Thank you.
Growing, it really is.
Okay.
With, one other question.
Yeah, go ahead.
With this expansion, how long do you see before the next expansion?
If everything goes well, hopefully we'll be talking in three to five years again. So this will hopefully get us to about 100,000 barrels. That'll put us number, close to number three on the list, just behind Stevens Point.
Did everybody catch the fact that Isaac is working to execute, unless you did already, the purchase of an additional three acres immediately adjacent?
Yeah.
So being that...
That'd be my next question, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, so this expansion will fit in the current lot that we have, but we already closed, well, we're closing in, in a few months, but it's already a done deal with the next three acres next to our current lot. So overall, we'll have about six acres of property.
Okay. Should we take the other item first to talk about, or is that automatic?
I did want to, if we could, still an open session, just touch base on basics regarding the development agreement.
Go ahead.
If that'd be all right.
Yep.
So when Isaac came, we, the board did approve a development agreement to support the existing project that included a, a cash incentive to assist him with his project and, and to entice him to choose Wanakee over other locations. The advice that we've received, and Brian did some research on this, is rather than amending the existing agreement, we're recommending that we consider essentially an identical agreement that, that merely addresses the addition of new value to the building. I can point out that, let me see if I can bring this up here. What is...
Did anybody else see that?
No, I'm, I'm gonna, it's, it's actually the wr- it's the wrong, I gotta bring up a different one, but ignore that. The, the existing district, tid, tid two?
Three.
Three, tid three, is in its waning years of life, has like five years of value left. By the time Isaac were to complete his project and put the value onto the roll to then cause increment, that we could consider supporting his project with, there'd essentially be only, I think, four years of viable, viable value remaining until the district needs to statutorily close. So I would also add that this is probably, if the board approves a development agreement and, and an incentive to help with this expansion, this would be the last action of dollar spending for this district, because actually the, the spending period expires on June 5th of this year. So we can't spend another dollar on a new municipal project, whether it's incentive or a road or what have you, after that time. So that, that's what we'll be discussing more in closed session, the specifics of what might be generated and what the board might be willing to provide.
Okay. So my question is, we have another section, item for session?
Yeah, I think, I think that if, to the extent that there's going to be an open session discussion on item four under new business, I would think that we would want to have that open session discussion right now, and then we could go into closed session on both of those other items, or both of the items that we, with two separate votes.
Okay. So, so I don't need to read anything until I talk about the other one? Is that what you're telling me?
Correct.
Okay. Discuss and take action on a potential sale of Castle Creek Outlot Plat-
Thanks.
Outlot 10? What are we going to talk about with it?
So... I don't have the closed session packet. What do you want us to talk about? Maybe that's just the...
Well, I, I don't know that, basically, we're looking at a plat, a, a piece of land that borders Wanakee and Westport, and we're going to be discussing whether that property owner could potentially purchase that property.
Yeah, Todd's going to try and bring up a map.
I believe it's in here, isn't it?
It's in a closed session.
No, it's in there, it's in there. So while we're waiting for them to find that?
It's on page...
Yeah, give me the page.
Way at the...
93?
Mm-hmm.
Right there.
Okay, thanks. A little bit of background. Todd, I can probably take this unless you want to.
No, go ahead.
Yeah. We received a, a written complaint that outlined that there's some, the village owns that property that's in the orange. This is on Mill Road, where, where it connects Woodland Drive, the pond, and that there were some improvements made on village-owned land, which included some fencing. And we were made aware of it, so we contacted the property owner, and that's about the extent of, I think you had a conversation with him, that he may have some interest in purchasing it from the village, or we need to make a decision on fencing that's on village property.
So maybe if I zoom in, you might be able to see better, the orange is village property, and then you can see how that, those rectangular shapes extend into there. Right here, if you follow this, right there.
That's the fencing that's been done on village property.
Do we own any other land around that, or just that triangle there?
The whole thing.
Right, but just that whole triangle. For some reason, we own that block.
Well, we own, there's a...
The conservancy.
The conservancy, but the...
That's, that's up over here.
Well, Todd, it's that, the outlots behind the yellow lots too.
Oh, here?
Yeah, that whole area. I mean, there is the potential of a, a trail connection, I think was always envisioned, you know, through that area. It may or not be feasible because of how wet it is and the terrain, but I think that was part of, and this is even before I was here, so it's more than 25 years ago, the village obtained the, the land through dedications of that particular subdivision.
They actually had to purchase it.
There's a deed, 1993, the land was transferred, outlots nine and 10, so the, I think the orange is 10, and the other area that Kevin was identifying was Outlot 9, and those were conveyed to the village. And for us to, I mean, it's a public document, for us to either sell or lease any of the land, we need to get approval of the WD, the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. And that's not to say that you're interested in doing that, but if, if part of the resolution here is either you want to lease this land to this individual or sell it to them, it's not just a decision that can be made by the village and the property owner, the DNR's going to have to be involved too. And my assumption is the reason why the DNR is involved for the uses that Kevin ident- anticipated uses back in 93 that were identified for the property.
Because the creek is right there?
Okay. Any other questions that you got before we potentially go into closed session? Okay, before we do that, I'll recognize we have three, three Boy Scouts here tonight in, in attendance, and if you guys, what merit badge are you working on tonight?
Communications.
Communications, very good. Hopefully we had some good communication up here tonight, and you guys learned some things from it. If you don't mind saying your names, is that okay?
I'm Creighton Starbuck.
Creighton?
I'm Ben Perutka.
Ben?
Tommy Tracer.
Tommy. Nice to meet you guys. Thanks for coming tonight and, and working on that. It's great, working towards your Eagle Scouts?
Yep.
Super.
Is that a friend next to her, or just...
So, okay. All right, so I need to read. The village board may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin statute 19.851E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The village board may reconvene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. We need a motion to...
And this, this is on the octopi matter?
This is octopi, yep. Motion by Sam, second by Sue. Roll call vote, please.
Erin Moran?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Chris Solner?
Yes.
Bill Random? Sue Springman?
Yes.
Sam Bowie?
Yes.
Joe Zitzelberger?
Yes. Okay, then we've got discuss and take action on potential sale of Castle Creek Outlot Plat, Outlot 10. The village board may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin statute 19.851E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, the village board may reconvene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. Look for a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Sam?
Second.
Second by Joe. Roll call vote, please.
Bill Random? Sue Springman?
Yes.
Sam Bowie?
Yes.
Joe Zitzelberger?
Yes.
Erin Moran?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Chris Solner?
Yes.